I'd like to call this meeting the Marshall Borough Council to order Monday, October 17th, 2016. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of solemn prayer, followed by a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public which stands one day in the land of our own and to the citizens of Liberty and the Constitution of this world. Next, we'll have a roll call.
Dave Ravela.
Here.
Vic Cicero.
In.
Fred Kern.
Present.
Corinne Croninbaum.
Here.
Danielle Larsson.
Here.
Ed Parker.
Here.
Bill Pepitone.
Here.
Todd Sanford.
Here.
Debbie Smith.
Here.
Jeanne Coquelin.
Here.
And me and Bobby are here as well.
I believe we have an executive session, the mayor, regarding... Okay, not there, but we do not have our EDC, um, executive session. EDC, sorry. So, we can just move on to the evening and we will meet afterwards with the mayor. We have no special presentations, or do we? Uh, next we have here in the bubble, and I have a list here, starting with Nancy Sherlock.
Good evening, council, mayor, and, uh, guests. Uh, after listening to the last council meeting, September 19th, I am asking for a few moments of your time to clarify some misinformation, and I have a couple of questions and comments as well. Uh, first, I'd like to comment that council had two motions at the top of the meeting on September 19th, and there was no pushback from anyone for the last minute motions. I see things have changed, and I think that's for the better, and I'm glad that everybody was comfortable with that. Regarding the Laimar Towns, it seems that there's a great deal of buzz about the Laimar Towns position of resident representative. I was never voted to that position. I have not represented myself as a member of the board, and no need to remove me immediately as Mr. Holt-Henrich has adjusted. If it states that on the website, um, they will need to be, that will need to be corrected, but I do not miss to the website. I'm not sure who Mr. Holt-Henrich was, uh, referring to when he talked about lying and fraud. Uh, I don't believe that the administration had certain wasn't made. Regarding the Enterprise Zone, again, Mr. Kurt Holt-Henrich said, he was referring, I think he was referring to the June 23rd, 2010 article yard news that took, that talked of the, of the Enterprise Zone, and the extension of it going west on Bridge Street. Uh, that was discussed, but my opposition to that was that there were six blocks of homes, and neighborhood as it existed at that time, didn't seem to make sense. Uh, all you have to do is ask the neighbors around and see if they want to build businesses in the neighborhood. Going to the canal or to Mars Avenue certainly wouldn't make sense, and it's, eventually that's what happened. Um, I've not had, I not only had the right, but had an obligation to bring that forward. Regarding vendor permits for the National Night Out, that was discussed in the last meeting. I requested the right to know to see what vendors had paid. There were numerous vendors who participated and paid nothing to the borough. According to the right to know, only the food vendors paid the vendor fee. I was wondering why the others did not pay. I also understand that, and this, I don't have verification of this, but was told that Town Watch was charged a $25 fee to each of its vendors to participate. Uh, Ms. Jones, uh, was up here at the last meeting, and she had made mention about signs and, uh, where they are placed and how they need to come down. Uh, while I would agree with her, that I still don't need to know about the yard sale from August 20th that's still hanging up. But as far as the Jazz Fest signs go, they were put up around noon on Saturday, and they were taken down within 24 hours. And regarding the sidewalk over the canal by the tow path, the Old Trent Avenue, that was not by our Public Works. Now, the Senator didn't have anything to do with that. Regarding the Jazz Fest, the Michael Shaw Foundation would like to thank all of those that showed their support and came out. It was a successful evening, afternoon interview, and we appreciated that support. We'd also like to thank those who attended and those who assisted in making it a success. I appreciate Jane Burge's comments regarding the Jazz Festival. And, uh, the purpose of the Jazz Festival is to make Marsville a destination, and with continued support, we can make that happen. Regarding the mayor's report, the Labor Day picnic was a success and has been growing over the years. I enjoyed overseeing the zucchini race, and everyone had a great time. The winners were especially excited. I appreciate the mayor's comments regarding the casino money, I hope that we receive that this year, but as Jane mentioned, we have applied a few times in the past, and are not considered close enough to the casino to be able to receive that. Uh, this is just a notation, the only reason someone would abstain is a just conflict of interest or a personal gain. So, any abstention on the, abstention on the bill for the Jazz Festival should have been a yes or a no vote. And when you are abstaining, you need to provide a, uh, writing to the borough secretary. I have a question about the hiring of important law associates, I was just wondering, how is that going to be different than when we were using Mr. Downey? If you can address that sometime, don't really know, I appreciate that. Uh, regarding the grant for the NEC and how it was prepared, Ms. Smith had made mention in a comment that Mr. Bates never really did that right before. After speaking with, uh, Deborah Colvin, she said it was done correctly and was signed by the council president, the secretary, and the treasurer, which was appropriate. I know council cannot do anything about the public comments and the rants on the various Facebook pages and information pages, but do know that these pages are harmful to this borough. You have people who do not live in town, but follow the drama that is contrived for the reader's pleasure. And you have residents who don't know or bother to know the truth. Just a couple of positive notes, the Canal Festival was a success even though we did not have the kayaks, uh, and they had to be mixed because we had no water in the canal. I'd like to say thank you to all those businesses that helped sponsor this event, they're listed on the board down at the Borough Hall. And those who, um, did not have an opportunity to bed or duck, there's always next year. There are many creative entries. Uh, thank you to the borough, for our council, and all the residents who recognized the very council mark by showcasing two colored bows. The foundation was proud to show off the display bows, in particular the bows on the majestic trees near the shopping center and the ones at the Borough Hall. They were taken down from the first of October. Congratulations to Howell Wilcox for being recognized by Laimar Towns with the community, with a community achievement award for his work on the Mega Sports Camp and his leadership in organizing the walk to bring attention to the drug epidemic. So, lastly, I'd just like to say that if my name continues to be sullyed and besmirched in these meetings, I would be forced to do, file a defamation of character suit. I realize that council doesn't have a lot of control of what people say, but, uh, we know we've tried to make things respectful in the past. If you can answer these questions, of course, again about the collection, I appreciate it. That would be all, thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Kurt Holt-Henrich.
Good evening, Kurt Holt-Henrich, Center of Melvin Avenue North. Uh, I want to have a little shout out to Town Watch Friday night, the Marsville Fire Department posted a Friday night Friday in which the coordinators of National Night Out, they can ladder some on, Kurt Holt-Henrich. Then, then with a check of $3,500 that was raised from all the proceeds of National Night Out went right to our fire department. $3,500, so I wanted to give a huge thank you for all the work they put together for National Night Out, for the donation to the fire department. Uh, and then thank Sherlock for clarifying the Laimar Town thing. It's kind of odd, their name, it's been on the website for months as a Laimer Town, as a resident of these areas, so it's weird that this showed up there. Uh, but thank you for trying to clarify that. Think you're being sullyed, try to live in mind of the... Uh, that was it, though, I just want to say thank you for, uh, the Town Watch Fire Department hosting Friday night Friday. And just, I love that, so thank you.
Next, we have Bill Farrell.
Uh, Bill Farrell, 347 Prince of Leonetta. I had, I get to my points a period of times, and I had an argument last week from a former controller, not Eric Holland, but his father. He was a controller for, I think, twenty-some years. He's mentioned that he had tried to make suggestions about the garbage problem back then. One was in his infancy that was there, but he said, "Nobody would listen to that." So, as a result of that, now he has a $700,000 bill. Should be payable, and I see the council's going to do something about it finally. There was a suggestion made by one of the members of our council, they should do like Philadelphia did. Philadelphia had outstanding bills. There's a number of penalties that were attached to these bills to give people amnesty. If they would come forward and pay their principal, which they hadn't paid over the years, and they would forgive the fines. Now, you're going to have a lawyer, a collection agency involved. And I, 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 maybe you could do better with the amnesty policy, I don't know, who knows? But, uh, you're still going to spend more money. But the only thing I come up with, like, people say, "Well, why do you talk?" I say, "Well, I have the right to talk. I'm a citizen, anybody has the right to talk. They have the right to say what you believe, but you don't have the right to, to say many things." I don't do that, and I don't think anybody should. But, this gives you an opportunity to, into the eyes of the council, face to face, and if you've got any questions, sometimes they answer them, sometimes they don't, but that's, that to me, that's acceptable. And the last and final thing is, we've got about three weeks till the circus is out of town for four more years. And, uh, there's a lot of people like me that I hear about. Uh, do you want to shoot yourself and take poison, because that's what you got? This country's in big trouble, no matter where you go, which one you pick. There's going to be winners and there are going to be losers. And I hate to tell you, people, the public is going to be losers. Everybody's going to be losers, no matter where you go, in my own opinion. And like I said, my concern is for the local borough and the state. Sometimes I have a problem with the state too. But the bottom, bottom line is, if you haven't voted, you've got three weeks. Pull your flavor, DR, whatever, any pen, and vote. Because that way you can do that, you have, you have every right to express your opinion. You don't have, you can't tell people what to do. And I just, like I said, I'll be glad when the circus leaves town. Then I can, maybe I can get a better seat in four years. And maybe I'll have a different circus with a different, uh, ringmaster. Because the two ringmasters you got now, it ain't happening. So, everybody have a good night, and get out and vote, thanks.
Bill? Next, we have Jane Berger.
Good evening, Jane Berger, 90 West Eagle Avenue. A couple of things. I know you've claimed to have an audit done of the borough funds of 2015. I'm wondering when the audit will begin to council to present that. Um, usually they go over it, and then it's done in a public meeting, so I'll be looking forward to hearing that. Um, second, I am still not seeing in the minutes on the second Tuesday of the month, special meetings called Agenda Work Sessions. They are before the December term, if you can be able to be done in the work page. Um, you two, I'd certainly be glad to help it across to the borough since it's hard for you to get this done. I was pleased with the agenda meeting and hear the talk about the budget process, and your plans to begin it as early and possible in November. What happened under the prior management was egregious, incompetent, and there's some other adjectives. There is no excuse for this council to get a budget, to begin discussions of a preliminary budget in December. It becomes critical now because we know in the general fund, we cannot cover all the costs for 30 bills. I'd love it if you wouldn't need that extra tour and quarter bills, and hopefully you will not need more, but that will require you to go to court. I'm from the county revalued, it was this fact of life in this borough for about 30 years, and we always had our preliminary budget by the Thanksgiving, by the end of November, so it was done. We knew what the proposed mileage was, so our attorney could do the paperwork and get it from the calendar up at the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas. Uh, I know you did one the year December 31st, and I know you'll do it as you can to avoid that this year so you can enjoy your, your holiday, so, um, and when that's ready, you just have to wait for a Friday pack. It's in Charlotte, your drop box is around there. And Fred, I know your agenda meeting next month is bumped back a week, um, because of the Labor Day, right? You're done with that, well, it's going to be a day of labor. Um, Election Day is the eighth, so if the budget is ready, prior to that, you can set up your budget meetings. You won't have to wait until that agenda meeting where you're squeezing in that week between, it gives you more time in case you do have to massage and make changes, and that gives your manager more time to, to do that. So, I just thought I'd, I'd share that with you. Uh, also, I see we're paying accordingly, uh, management thing, the JHCI. Um, did we ever get the annual evaluation to find out how much money we save by making the, the changes over the, the cost of the, uh, the loan we took out? It would be nice to know that, uh, that information, and as I'm sure that is a public document, there would maybe some interest in, in hooking of that. I'm pleased to see on the agenda tonight, the appointment by council of the junior councilperson. There are so many things you have to do that are difficult. It's nice when the borough council gets to vote on something that's, that's positive and of a, a benefit and a learning experience for our youth. I did have a couple of questions on some of the bills, they may be modifications. On page one of GL 1699, um, the tractor salesmen, the shipper for trees, it's not a large cost, $32. I imagine that's just a maintenance. But the next item down, we paid Davis Trucking $2,000 for a leaf cleanup. I'm guessing that may be the compost area, and I'm wondering if there isn't something to be done that compost could be available, available for some of the, uh, the residents to use, that you wouldn't have to incur that cost in the future if that is, if that, that cost represents. Uh, again, I'm just pointing out from page two, the, the bill for joint controls, the energy savings, what do they call them? For $73.32 and $0.20. I'm not familiar with Britton Industries, but they do some work in the parts. Several items, they're all $70. Again, it's just something that I'm not familiar with. That's as far as I was able to go, if you can get through the, uh, checks between the council meetings, thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have 6A, a regular Borough Council meeting of August 15th, 2016. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Corinne and Debbie? Any questions or comments on those minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question passes eight zero. Next, we have 6B, a regular Borough Council meeting of September 19th, 2016. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. That's Debbie and Bill. Any discussion on those minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question passes eight zero. We'll move on now to reports of the administration and management. We've moved announcements into the managers' report, and if we have any, we will announce them.
Uh, for the residents, uh, today who did not receive, uh, the recycling, uh, picked up, uh, apparently our, uh, trash, our recycling providers, they, um, had the employee, um, a couple of their employees were sick today. However, they will be back on tomorrow, and it will be, get picked up. Also, um, on our website, uh, I don't know how many people saw that we have a new website. However, on Friday, we usually post our agenda meeting, our agenda for this meeting, and, um, we're still trying to work the bugs out with that, so it didn't show up on the calendar. So, uh, we will fix that and have that done in the future, and, uh, excellent, thank you very much.
Well, next we move on to 7B, the solicitor's report.
Thank you very much, uh, President Kern. Uh, just a couple of matters. Uh, over this last month, our office has assisted the borough manager and staff on written over requests, who've also worked with the borough manager and staff on several drill state matters, as well as following up on litigation and some personal, personnel matters. Uh, that concluded the solicitor's report.
Next, we have the 7C, the engineer's report, but I have no engineer, maybe? 7B is the mayor's report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Chief McLean will be with us tonight. The chief is in San Diego with Officer Nanny, who is receiving an award for the International Chief of Health and Secession. You may recall he's being awarded with the Audit Theft Job of the Year. On October 27th, it's actually a breakfast event that the chief will be honored as the Boots Count of the Year Award was earned by the Washington, Boston, Bucks County, Boots Council of America. Tonight on the agenda, council will be voting on the Halloween policy, this is done every year, as a reminder to everyone. In our borough, during the evening of Halloween, this year, the people have officers now in vehicles as well as in the bicycles. Of course, it'll be getting cold soon, so a friendly reminder is try to remember the locking hardware, they're leaving it, turning it up, I, I tend to. And Saturday, October 27th, 10:02, Morris will be participating in the National Prescription Book Take Back Day. And, so please remember that we do so, we do have a prescription draft on Zoraillo all year long. San Francisco's next to the Police Department of the Borough, that is the center of our...
David, the fourth section.
Uh, what did I say? Uh, I said the other. Sorry.
This Saturday. So, we have the police chief report, unless he's going to get in from San Diego. Okay, we'll move on to finance. We have 8A, a motion to pay the bills. May I have a reading of the bills, please?
The general fund, $115,954.6. Streetlight fund, $7,519.4. The library fund, $2,888. The recreation fund, $3,336.59. The sinking fund is $2,853.73. The street fund is $2,540. State highway fund is $1,281.14. And the borough retirement, um, area of, uh, for the police is $787.64 for Jones, for a grand total of $137,149.64. Since the last meeting, $228,603.03, for a grand total of $365,758.67.
I have a motion to pay those bills.
Second.
Uh, Debbie?
Yeah, I have a question. Sure, no, I don't have a question. Um, on, uh, NO716GL-1609 or H3, I am standing for voting on invoice number 012489 slash 012, in a total amount of $161.90 for vendors saying for notice on TV due to venue and the conflict of interest.
Done. Any other questions or comments on the bills?
Question. If I could clarify some, I think it was what Jane asked about when it came to Britton. Britton down in the bill list, it was entries the same amount, right, for topsoil? I believe that was from topsoil entries and so on, yeah. Didn't say in the first part, but... Yeah, the exact question is...
I think that is that, that makes islands?
Yeah, yeah, that was all the topsoil being brought in, and, yeah, that's, yeah, plus, mhm. Um, and if I could just ask, um, Mr. Sudi, the, the staff's line for the LED repair lights, is that for the two that were the surgery, that were surgery and that they were messed up, or the one that was knocked down?
No, that's not, that's not the one that was knocked down, it was from the power surge.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions on bills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills pass eight zero. Next, we have 8B, a motion to adopt the 2016 Halloween policy. I have another copy of the 2016 Halloween policy. Unless you want to read it.
Thank you.
Policy statement of Borough Mar- Marsville on the subject of Halloween trick-or-treat activity. It is the policy of the mayor and borough council that all door-to-door trick-or-treat activity in connection with Halloween shall take place on Monday, October 31st, 2016 until 8 o'clock PM. All children under 16 years of age shall be accompanied by a responsible adult. Tips for motorists: obey speed limits, watch for children walking along the road or who may run into the street. If you are going to a party, please remember to designate a sober driver. Tips for parents or guardians: buy or make brightly colored, highly visible costumes for children that do not interfere with a child's ability to see, hear, or walk. Add strips of reflective tape to darker colored costumes and trick-or-treat bags. Provide a flashlight or glow stick for children to carry. Always accompany children while they are trick-or-treating, and remind children to pay attention to their surroundings. Tips for children: walk instead of run when crossing streets. Look both ways when approaching cars before stepping off the curb. Walk on sidewalks whenever possible. Residents are cautioned not to permit anyone into their home unless they know the identity of such a person. Conversely, children and parents are cautioned not to enter anyone's home unless they know the residence, and then only if they have the permission of a parent or guardian. Children should bring all edibles to their parent or guardian before eating such items. Parents should carefully inspect all items given to children to ensure such items are safe. The mayor and borough council wish everyone a safe and happy Halloween holiday. And as the mayor said, the police will be out, and on foot on the power of life this year, which should be great. To have a motion to adopt the 2016 Halloween policy. Go move.
Second.
Ted and Corinne, any discussion on Halloween? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question passes eight zero. Next, we have 10B, the appointment of a junior councilperson.
I just want to let the pu- the public's knowledge, um, we have three really great candidates, and this is a program that I hope continues to be built up. Um, hopefully, in the next couple of years, we'll have a dozen, 20 applicants. Um, for the future, just to, for, to let council know who everybody is, in case they can't make the, um, interviews, I'm just going to ask them, each applicant, to write maybe a one or two paragraph, um, as to why they think they should be the, the junior councilperson.
I think that's, that's good for both us and for the students.
Right.
As a part of that, as a self...
Right, um, I would like to nominate and, and, uh, and get the person today so that I can let them know, because now this is going to be pushed back into November, so, are you going to ask for nominations?
If the council feels they have enough information to make nominations, I will do that. And I don't know that we all feel that we know enough about the candidates to appoint. I know you, Danielle, and I do.
Right.
Because we made the meeting.
Well, I didn't have any other council members ask me questions, did you?
I did not.
We, we did the interviews last month, so I would like, like I said, I would like to move forward because the PSAB doesn't recognize, only recognize the junior councilperson if they're here for the entire school year, and again, I don't have the same perspective, whatever now, so...
I, I will say then, we will make the motion to appoint someone for junior councilperson. May I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Garlee St. Seer.
Nomination for Garlee St. Seer? Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Garlee also. I think she's a great candidate, she really was.
I, I, too.
They were three really great candidates, honestly, so, they, they really...
They were all great kids.
They really do make us all proud, very.
I would concur that she was the, the...
Yes.
Only by this much.
Yeah. I, I agree, they were great, three, three wonderful students that came in. And we have a nomination for Garlee St. Seer and no other nominations that I know of. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? We'll now have the, I guess, roll call on Garlee St. Seer.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Ms. Croninbaum.
Yes.
Mrs. Larsson.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone.
Yes.
Mr. Sanford.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Question passes eight zero. I believe that's all we have, we move on to borough officials, if there were any announcements you missed earlier?
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Kernner.
Yes.
Ms. Cronicle.
Yes.
Mrs. Larison.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Pepitone.
Yes.
Mr. Sanford.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. I believe that's all we have, we move on to borough officials, if there were any announcements from yesterday earlier.
I just have a couple of quick ones. Uh, the library is having their Halloween party for the kids, I believe it is Thursday, October twenty-seventh.
That is correct.
Okay, good. So it is October twenty-seventh, and the other thing, uh, the senior center continues to have a lot of programs. I believe their designer bag bingo is maybe this Friday, that's a total guess on my part, so please check their Facebook page and get those called.
That's correct as well. Your guess is a hundred.
And that is all I have.
The library is also showing, say, uh, the Great Pumpkin Charlie Brown, it's the fortieth, fiftieth anniversary, I think? Fifty, started in sixty-six, but I'm not so good with math. Uh, that'll be Saturday, or Friday night at six, which I believe is also the same time as trick-or-treating. Should be busy weekend, but kids are interested in these things. So do we need to meet before, Karen, or?
Mr. Council President?
Yes.
Did you just think quick enough?
Sure.
Real quick, uh, last Saturday, this past Saturday, the Morrisville Yardley Rotary Club held our first fundraiser, with all proceeds going to the rebuild the children's playground project in Williamson Park. It was a tremendous success, uh, the first in a series of fundraisers that were going to put together, to help put that playground back in Williamson Park and make it a great playground for everyone. Uh, thank you to everybody who showed up, thank you to everybody who donated, thank you to everybody who chipped in and helped. It's fairly appreciated, thank you everyone.
Thank you for your efforts and spirit, I mean, I will.
I would actually, I would like to say something. Uh, the Friends of Morrisville Golf Park, uh, will be, will be holding a grand reopening on Saturday, October twenty-third. The grand date is the thirtieth, from two P M to three, three P M, to celebrate the latest improvements that have been done through the grant project. Um, they've realized they're not quite done yet, but the big ticket items have been completed. Um, they would like to invite all of council, the mayor, and anyone else who would like to attend the ribbon cutting. And also, I'd actually like to, um, clarify a few things that were stated about National Night Out. Three years ago, when National Night Out was first formed, I got together with Maureen, Bob, right there, and myself and General Hemmerich, put this event together. And when we filled out our forms, we were never told that all vendors, we were just told that food vendors have to pay. So I filed a rights and no request for all, and anything that has to do with Williamson Park and events. There's nothing in there that states that all vendors have to pay the borough twenty-five dollars. So nonprofits, which is the majority of vendors that show up to National Night Out, obviously, we do not charge. If there is a profit company that comes out, the twenty-five dollars goes to the fire company. No one, myself, Jen, volunteers, nobody, none of us, take home any money. It goes to our emergency services. The first year, it went to the police department, the second year, it went to the ambulance squad. This year, it went to the fire company. So no one takes home any profits from this event. And it takes us six months, six months, to put this event together. So had there been an issue with National Night Out not paying, I would imagine that Bob and Maureen, who have been working with us for the last three years, would have let us know about it. So the fact that we didn't know is not a mistake. It's just something that mainly was overlooked. It wasn't malicious, it wasn't meant to be anything but a nice event for everyone to enjoy. Thank you.
Thanks, well, just one question. When is the ribbon cutting delivered?
October twenty-third, and the grand date is ten thirty.
And on October twenty-second, there's also a monthly dinner at Summers Guest. And then we can discuss about that call, summer seating for Davis.
I have a little bit. On the twenty-second at six P M, the, uh, Morrisville Surf Society is having a haunted dinner. Tickets for twenty hours of general admission, twenty-five hours for a B P I seating in the haunted crypt. Um, and you can contact the reservation charade at three one five, two nine five, twenty-nine hundred.
Hold the other card, you don't have to go down the crypt.
And Mr. Parker? Parker, what was the date on that?
Twenty-second.
This Saturday. I believe there's gonna be like an open light site, it'd be actually haunted, scary, terrible happen in your part of Morrisville, we, we don't all live in the same houses, uh, haunted by the same ghosts. So should we break?
Yeah.
What's your idea?
Well, I, can I add something?
Sure, sure.
Okay, just to clarify a couple of things. So, um, for Sherlock mentioned the two votes that were added to the agenda last week. One was for the, um, the bond, half-bond within a hundred thousand, excuse me, the borough manager. Um, and the reason for that is it should have been a higher amount, should have some lower amounts, and of course, all the council, um, recognized that, so everyone knows that, uh, thank you, Mrs. Sudey, to get on that right away, it's established, it's in, and I've taken care of it. Um, the second one was, um, the vote for the M E S A. They did great work, um, they did great work with the grant, um, and Mr. Bates did a lot of things he shouldn't have been doing the right way. The only thing that was, was to just, uh, make sure that the council is involved in showing our support also for that grant to be written under us first. Had nothing to do with anything that we weren't doing properly, um, but just a procedural thing, and I believe everybody understood that.
And I believe we had to do that.
Yeah.
Cause I signed it, and I'm signing with the authority of this council.
Exactly, exactly. Um, and lastly, um, it was brought about abstaining from vote. Um, I'm assuming what she means, meaning the only person voted against that for the payment for the jazz fest of that five hundred dollars was myself, and I didn't abstain. I voted no, I know exactly what an extension is, um, and I gave my reason. Um, I didn't have to, but the person asked me what it was, I said what it was, so I do know what an extension is, but it was a no vote.
Any other borough official matters? Then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Bill.
Do you have any second?
I need a second.
He's gonna adjourn before, on personnel, second.
That was one of his, of mine.
Yeah, he said personnel after the meeting, he said personnel after the meeting.
I think I said it pretty early, just when I was quiet. Busy personnel discussion from there. I don't have a second on adjournments though.
Second?
No, again, who was the second?
I think that was ten. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will now recess for, exactly, the second. Debbie, thank you guys.
Thank you for having us.
So we can.
There's nobody here.